You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is February twentieth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, February twentieth, Michigan City City Council meeting. If you live, please, we totally stand, please silent your electronic devices. Stand for the twenty-three minutes and a moment of silent prayer.
Pardon me, yes, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Colton.
Present.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Maldonar.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine on present and no one else.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. And before we go any farther, I just want to welcome our new fourth ward city council member to the city council. Mr. Tim Beatry, welcome, Mr. Beatry.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you aboard and uh, time to move forward. Moving on, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Support. Motion by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees and reports of standing committees from the council. Having none, finance committee, Councilwoman Tillman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City Riverboat Boy Claims Docket for February twenty twenty twenty-four. Before reading that, I will first like to thank um, President, President Don Preszbalinski for my reappointment to the Michigan City Finance Committee for twenty twenty-four. And also on that committee will be Dr. Cora and Mr. Beatry. Moving along, the claims for February twenty twenty twenty-four, riverboat fund number two-two-three-five forty-seven thousand three hundred five dollars seventy-nine cents. Riverboat E F T fund number two-two-three-five zero dollars. Boy Development E F T fund number two-five-zero-four zero dollars. Total claims forty-seven thousand three hundred, I'm sorry, forty-seven thousand three hundred five dollars seventy-nine cents. Those purchases claims were for La Porte Chrysler Dodge Jeep totaling again forty-seven thousand three hundred five dollars seventy-nine cents. The City of Michigan City twenty twenty-four Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. That's correct, that's. Okay. Um, it is five million eight hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars seventy-four cents. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. That's the claims docket. Uh, are there any reports from boards and commissions? And I do know that the uh, Women's Commission is here this evening and you and. Pardon, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Alright, uh, we have to approve the claims docket. Is there a motion to approve?
President, make a motion to accept it.
Support. Okay, there was a motion by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, claims are approved. Now we move on to reports from boards and commissions. And since the Women's Commission is here this evening, uh, we have Shannon Easton uh, from our committee and Ron Miller from the Richmond Corporation that'll speak before the ladies commission, okay? Yeah, cuz they're already on the agenda. So, reports from boards and commissions, Shannon Easton from the Michigan City Art Committee is here this evening to give the twenty twenty-three annual report.
I'm Shannon Easton, I'm the treasurer of the Michigan City Public Art Committee. This is Janet Block from the Lubesnik Center and she is our chair and Dale Cooper from La Porte County C V B, who is a member of the committee. So tonight, we'd like to present our twenty twenty-three annual report. Next slide, please. Our committee was formed in January of twenty-eleven. We have eleven members um, and they range from the public library to the Lubesnik Center, um, P N C, La Porte County Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have an architect engineer position and then several community members um, that are at large, that are interested in art. Next slide, please. Janet will speak of our art scholarships tonight.
The scholarships, uh, well, first of all, let me just say I'm happy to be here and it's really nice to see. It's very nice to see all these new faces as well and old. So, just, just kinda struck me when I came in that I, you know, knew a lot of you and happy to see you there. Um, the scholarship, uh, art scholarship part of our budget, I think it has to be closed, is that better? Is, yes, is a really important component of what we do. Um, so we give scholarships to students eighteen and under that live in the Michigan City School, this school, area school district um, for classes that they wanna take. And um, we have used a total in twenty twenty-three, there were seven children's scholarships. Um, I believe that we actually um, we fund any others that are from La Porte or whatever, from the Lubesnik Center. So it's just a really important piece. Many families get to enjoy the arts because of that.
Sam, I think it's important to note that um, over our history, we have given ninety-two scholarships, over ten thousand dollars in scholarships for children to participate in art. I will let this council know, a lot of you are new, we have two budgets, an operating budget and a gifts and donations budget. Um, the scholarships are paid through gifts and donations. We ended the year with seventeen dollars and sixty-two cents. So we are no longer able to um, give scholarships out right now until we do some major fundraising to beat that account back up, but that's a very important part of our mission. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, I wasn't sure you wanted to.
Next slide, please. So um, twenty twenty-three was the tenth year of Sculpt Fusion. Sculpt Fusion is a program that brings art into the Uptown Arts District on a rotating basis. The majority of our leases are for two years. Um, this keeps the exhibit exciting, it keeps people coming down to the Uptown Arts District to see what's new. So this year, we had twelve sculptures valued at almost three hundred and forty thousand dollars, just in the Uptown Arts District. Next slide, please. We brought in three new sculptures in June of twenty twenty-three. Eye of the Storm by Michael Magnetta, Connected by Maureen Gray, and Moon Spirit by Tess Little. So those three were added to the rotation this year. Next slide, please. Um, this is a great piece that was um, donated by Don Babcock and Roger Kerr. Roger Kerr owns Blue Moon Market in Westville. Apparently, they are old childhood friends. They came up with an idea, they had a sculpture that was shipped to Westville in pieces from Mexico, made out of recycled pop cans. And they spent many months um, putting the sculpture together and then doing really a lot of work to it. So they redid the outside of it, I'm not sure all the methods, but they like hand painted every hair on every leg, they built this beautiful limestone base, and then they donated it to the city. Um, so currently, it's sitting on Lake Shore Drive, across from the zoo, right next to the entrance, where over a hundred thousand visitors a year get to interact with this piece. And kinda to get it out there, we did a fun naming the ram contest. We had a lot of engagement with the public and it was over a three-month period, a lot of names. Um, the winner was Eric Williams, who is now our Assistant City Events Director, very witty guy. So the ram got the name Vincent Van Goat. He was invited to our annual reception and it's just been a great piece. And I, I can't thank Don Babcock and Roger Kerr enough for this creative id- or idea, all the work that they did, and there was just a lot of engagement around it, and then they donated it to us. So that was a great gift. Next slide, please. Clairvoyance was a piece that we had on lease, it was on the corner of Highway twelve and Michigan Boulevard. In October of twenty twenty-two, a vehicle left the roadway and actually wedged itself through the larger circle. Um, the sculpture along with the vehicle had to be towed to a junkyard where they were able to remove the vehicle from the sculpture. But we saw an opportunity with our insurance company to have it repaired and put it back in our collection for eight thousand dollars. So we got an eighteen thousand dollar piece, it's one of my favorites. Um, so a bad situation turned out really great for the city and now it has a permanent house in front of Horizon Bank, which I think is great because it really kinda mimics their logo and um, it's a nice walking area so people get to get up close and personal or before they were just driving by it. And quite honestly, we wanted to move it out of the driving area and keep it safe. So that worked out good for us. Uh, we celebrated all of our sculptures in twenty twenty-three at a reception hosted by Leeds where we invited the sculptures to speak about their pieces. That was very successful, so thank you to Leeds. Next slide, please. In addition to our revolving sculptures, we've also been um, adding to the city's permanent collection. So I won't go through them all, but those are all pieces that have been purchased or donated to the city. Um, there are seventeen of them and all valued at over four hundred thousand dollars. So that's quite an art collection for a city of our size. We're very proud of that. There's a little collage of all the pieces and you can see how diverse they are, um, scattered throughout our city. Just trying to keep up. Let's talk about neighborhood art.
Um, we were actually granted um, more money last year for the first time in a long time from the council. Thank you for that. And because of that, we were able to do a few things. Well, one of the things that we heard was that the neighborhoods really desire to have art in their community. Um, so uh, we moved a piece called Crystal Effect, which is the piece you see on the left, to um, Ohio and Anne, um, and it makes quite a presence. And then the other piece uh, by John Sauvay, which is a piece that's, that is in our collection, is at the um, training station, fire training station on Michigan Boulevard. Um, in addition, you may have noticed, next slide, please. That we did um, one of the largest expenses that we used for the um, extra influx of funds was to put a mural on um, the barrier wall at Canada Park. Uh, people have commented how much they love this piece. It was done by Felix Maldonado and it basically features um, indigenous plants and animals to the area. Um, and we had a ribbon cutting for it in October of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we've heard since then is that the community wants more murals, right? Um, we have other works in our permanent collection, um, including the photographs that you see in the council chambers, um, a piece that is painted Lake Shore is out in the lobby of City Hall and the photo opportunity fishboard that shows up at many city events. I just wanna say that because of some of the stuff that we've done, people from other um, communities in La Porte County have contacted me to find out how, how we do it. Um, because we're definitely seen as a model for places that really feel public art enlivens the community. Um, and you know, so whether it's a mural or rotating sculptures, people from other communities are noticing us and would really like a model similar. So I think that speaks well for Michigan City.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I hope you've gotten a chance to see the artwork that's in um, Charles Westcott Park. Um, my, myself along with uh, people like Nancy Maldonar worked on that particular sculpture for a little over two years, we, we are still doing things with that. But the Michigan City Public Arts Committee got together and decided that it would be a good idea to put information in the kiosk that's out there as well, uh, having more information for Naomi Anderson. Um, art is the number four reason that people uh, in the United States travel to different cities. They travel over fifty, fifty miles um, or more to look at art. So beautification of our city is extremely important. We want people to come and enjoy our city. And um, the Naomi Anderson Committee is also going to put up banners along Michigan Boulevard as well. So if you haven't checked it out, please go out there and, and take a look at it cuz it's amazing.
AutoCast. AutoCast is a self-guided app that you can download on your smartphone. Um, it gives you a self-guided tour of all the art in Michigan City. And you can find the locations of the artwork, a description, and then a verbal narrative from the artist of why they created it and what they think it's about. So it's a really cool program, um, it's really gained in popularity. Uh, it's incredible to me that like our top stats were doing COVID when people were cooped up and looking for something to do. And this was an outlet. They wanted to go outside, they wanted to do something and so they might not love art, but they stumbled across it. So our hits are going up, so this is a great program. We do advertise it in all our downtown businesses on little window clings. It's free, um, we add to it every year, so all of our revolving sculptures are in there. So we invite you to scan the Q R code and take a little trip on AutoCast, it's definitely worth it. Next slide, please. Our financial report, you can't read, but I will just give you the meat and potatoes. We ended the year with zero dollars and zero cents in our budget. So we spent everything, again, thank you to the council for the additional twenty thousand dollars we got in twenty twenty-three that allowed us to spread out into our neighborhoods. That was our top goal and we definitely attained that goal. Um, we're still looking at twenty twenty-four with some neighborhood art. We created a plan of different places around the city, mainly parks department properties because it's a park, people are going there and there's just a lot of opportunities without having to deal with any land issues. So we'll continue that goal in twenty twenty-four. I already mentioned, we have seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents. So if anyone wants to donate towards art scholarships, please let us know. Our twenty twenty-four goals, um, very important to our committee is investigating a percent for art program. We are not sure exactly what that looks like, but we've spent three years looking at public, private, and then combined public-private programs that would um, put a percentage of new construction buildings, um, things of that nature, development in the city towards art. And that can be done in a number of ways, so we're still researching that, but that will be coming back to the council in the very near future. So some of the cities that we investigated um, would build money into their budget. If they're gonna do a two million dollar development in Michigan City, they would have to give a percent for public art or their development would have to include public art. So that's a way for us to get funded and to keep spreading out throughout the community. We need to grant more children's scholarships, um, that's a big goal of ours. Our neighborhood parks that we're looking at now is a Merrill at Gardena Park, near the basketball court, something that's geared towards teens, something that is positive, maybe sports related cuz the basketball that goes on there, that's a heavily used park. Walker Street Community Garden, I've spoken with their garden manager Dominique and we're discussing ways to bring something to the garden because a lot of people go to that park for a different reason. They go to grow food and share food and learn together, but it also has the playground and the sports. Um, so that's a great opportunity. Singing Sands Trail, and it goes across Trail Creek through a site called Waste Inc. A lot of people don't know what that is, but it's a thirty-seven acre site under the control of the EPA that will soon be handed over to the city. There is a pump house there, um, I don't know the dimensions, it's probably twelve by twelve by twelve, it's like a big block. But it's right on the trail, um, it's a great place to have public art that's unexpected. You cross Trail Creek and boom. So the owners of that, not the owners, the city, we own the property. But the people that are overseeing it right now have actually came out last fall and painted it to give us a base because they want it to happen. The EPA wants to bring a positive message to a cleaned-up site. Look, Michigan City put a trail through here, that's great for them, it's great for us. The public art is just another piece that they're interested in. Oasis Splash Park, um, down in Washington Park, one of my pet peeves when I go to the Splash Park is it's decorated in decals of saltwater animals, which offends me. There are sea turtles, there are clownfish. It offends me because we have so many beautiful things to celebrate with our fresh water. I just want that to come down and I want our story put up there. Um, Pullman Skate Park, it's a gateway to the city. The sides of the ramps are a great place to do some very energetic art that kinda ties in with skating and also like brings your eye to park as you enter the city. And then Fetter's Alley All-Inclusive Playground, um, that's a four million dollar all-inclusive playground and fitness park that's in the works. The exciting part of that is we have acquired two ten and twelve-foot dragonflies. They're pieces of art that I have been chasing since the day I got on the art committee. They are magnificent, they fit in with our nature theme. Um, so the purchase contract for that is in the works, those will belong to Michigan City and they'll be a gateway to the new park. And then also, the same artist is coming in next week, working with Janet and her group. She's going to do two workshops with children where she teaches them about our native plants, animals, insects, birds. And then they draw them. She'll pick twenty of the best and she'll turn them into bronze castings that are three-dimensional. And those children will have a piece of art permanently in the Fetter's Alley Playground. It'll be spread out, there'll be different animals, it'll be something that they can be proud of forever. I drew this, I made this. And in the meantime, it, it's also teaching them about their own environment and it teaches visitors that come in. It's a scavenger hunt of what can you find in these small public art pieces in the park. So I'm super excited about that project. Next, please. I think that's the last slide. So I just wanna say, I'm really amazed that this committee works very hard, they're all volunteers. We brought in over three-quarters of a million dollars in artwork that you can see today in Michigan City. Again, they're all volunteers. Um, they're an amazing group, they get a lot done with a very small budget and I'm proud to be associated with the committee. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you, man. Yeah, go ahead. No, I just wanted to thank uh, all three of you and all the members who serve the committee. This is, and I've been here for all these years, but I didn't realize all the work that goes behind that, I see them. But the work that goes behind them and thanks for the Lubesnik Center for uh, being a focal point for art in our communities. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Um, I just had a quick question when it comes to um, determining um, how to beautify the parks. When it comes to Pullman Field, with skate park being close to the highway, what about the rest of the park? Do y'all have any ideas or any uh, creative things to spruce it up besides just the skate park portion?
As far as artwork?
Yes.
So yes, there's always an opportunity for art in every one of our parks. We again, have a small budget. Um, I think we focused on the skate park ramps, only the north-facing ramps as a gateway to our city. So it's something that people see right when they come in, that like Michigan City's an art town. But absolutely, we're looking at murals, um, Janet's done some research with like picnic shelters, basketball courts.
Right, one of the, um, so let me just be blunt about what are the difference between the public art committee, let's say, and some of the projects Lubesnik Center has taken on for um, for murals. So we and the public art committee are only allowed to put art on public property. There aren't a ton of buildings that the city can, I mean, that's one of the things that I found in my research, just driving around with uh, Skylar York. Like, we would be like, what about this site, what about this site? And that was for murals and for sculpture. And honestly, the parks are probably the most prominent, like all the, most of the land, even empty lots everywhere, are privately owned. Um, it's something to look into cuz we, you know, we would desire to put more things right in neighborhoods for people. And if we did that, what like we do for, at Lubesnik Center for murals that we do is we have public meetings so that the people who live near or are involved in the areas have sit, have, have input. And we take that input, we won't really do anything at Lubesnik Center without public input, without three meetings. So there's, I just want you to sort of know the difference because um, Lubesnik Center looks for grants and uses some of our own money. Public art uses this committee's money. Um, and it can be, and it's not that important to differentiate because they enhance one another. But um, but I just wanna like paint you the picture that we do actually look for, I've looked for sites throughout this area throughout for the last couple of years and it's just not that easy to find. So for instance, we all were really happy to find a little triangle of land on the west side right behind the um, the um, mall, the outlet mall, that would be kind of a gateway to the west side cuz that's actually owned by redevelopment. But you know, I just, one thing you could really be helpful is just to have that in mind that these, that it's not like we can just put things anywhere and that um, that a lot of the land is bought up by people, maybe, that you know, whether they're or not, I mean, it's just, it's just something to keep in mind for us that we would love to infuse all the neighborhoods. But right now, the parks, yeah, we do want impact where people see the stuff because, and you know, so it's, I don't know what else, like where else in the skate park we could actually put, or Pullman Park where we could put things, but I think we're very open. We always have public, public meetings at every segment or public input.
No, the only reason why I say that cuz the skate parks get a lot of attention. So I just wanna beautify the whole park, just not one side.
I agree, I mean, and we looked at Joe Hawkins Park and we looked at some park we can't identify that has a basketball court. Some really wanna do something in, but like.
Maybe not just close to the street.
Right, I, I get it, I'm just saying we're looking in, in the interior places too. But it's just not that easy to find where like something could go without interfering with other activities that are actually owned by the city. This, I just think it's important knowledge cuz at first I thought too, like I'm driving around going, let's put one here, let's put one there. But there, it's not, it's not that easy because, I mean, I came home, I came back with like twenty sites at one point, we looked them all up and they were all privately owned.
So Councilman Nelson, I would just say like we welcome ideas and they can be as simple as we had a children's art program where the kids did picnic tables for Canada Park. And they came out and there was an art teacher and they painted all these tables which go very well with doombilies across the street. It's eclectic, so they loved it. Um, if you see in Washington Park, there's a lot of like hand painted garbage barrels that the kids do. So it can be something that's simple, we just need to know. Bring it to our committee, um, know that we have limited funds, but we can write grants, so ideas are always welcome.
Councilwoman Maldonar?
You're welcome.
Yes, um, I really do want to acknowledge the um, Public Arts Committee. I know that you all are totally volunteers and you have accomplished so much of significance for the city and the arts. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you so very much. And I'm gonna throw out an idea to you that came up at one of the um, Black History Month events that I attended and that's for Charles. And that's for Charles R. Westcott Park, that they, the, the community, the, um, black community would like to see something acknowledging his contributions to all of the youth that attended the Eli Youth Center and for all of the guidance and mentorship that he provided for generations of our, um, especially young black men in our community. So, I delivered the message and now, um, I can give it to you, but, um, you do have a partner in me that I will look for funds, okay, to apply for to actually make that happen.
That's great.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Beatry.
Shannon, I'm interested in what you were talking about when you said that you were considering maybe looking at public versus private percentages for art. If I understood you right, you were talking about maybe talking to a developer who was interested in Michigan City requiring that a certain percentage of the dollar value of their, their development would be spent on either contribution to the Public Arts Committee or art that, that they would put in that developer, is that right?
That's correct.
So, are you talking about the whole city or just the public art district?
The whole city.
The whole city? And any art that they might want to put in would be approved by the Michigan City Public Art Committee?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the hope is that eventually, when everybody starts to get used to the idea that it might be an ordinance where, you know, half a percent would be asked and that, and that is a model other cities use. And we've talked about it for years, we've studied other ordinances and, um, you know, there's hesitation because everybody wants development here and nobody wants to put roadblocks up, but it is a model that, well, it's a model Chicago uses to get Indianapolis. Indianapolis, yeah, I mean, there's, there are actually smaller cities all around in Indiana that have ordinances. Um, so you have to sort of build up a little, a little taste for it.
I think it's a cool idea, but asking for an ordinance to require a developer to put aside a certain percentage of public art could end up being a slippery slope, but it's a cool idea.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Thank you for that great presentation in regards to your year-end, um, review for the arts. I do have a question off of Councilman Nelson in regards to the skate park, um, as a suggestion, as you were all speaking, I just envisioned, so for the park in itself as a whole, what we're failing also to realize, Willard Ave has enhanced quite a bit over the years. And that is traveled not just for those that's coming into the city, but those that's in the city travels Willard Ave every day, all day. We want to see that art too, on Willard Ave. So, if a sculpture, and I'm just envisioning a sculpture or a piece of art that embodies unity of a family, I'm just putting that out there. And it's off of the road and it's off of the street, so not to think that any artwork that will go into any of the parks in their open areas, which city owns these parks, so it's not private, that it will be appreciated, but we have to have that opportunity to be able to appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, are you, I just wanted to know for myself, in the park itself? In the, okay. Because we've traveled up and down Willard Ave many times looking for plots of land and there are many, but they're private, so.
But inside the park.
Yes.
Any other comments from council members of the Art Committee? Well, myself being a liaison to the Arts Committee, I do have to say that, uh, the three ladies here and the whole group does a fantastic job for the city of Michigan City. And I wasn't a real artsy person, uh, before I got on the committee, but I figured, hey, let's give it a shot and see what happens and yeah, I appreciate everything, uh, the ideas they come up with and I think we're moving Michigan City ahead with all the hard work and effort, so, and we're going to keep it going. So, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. And Mr. Ron Miller is with us this evening to talk about the Michigan City Enrichment Corporation.
Yes, I next. Excuse me. Good evening, President Chris Billinski, members of the council. My name is Ron Miller, my day job is manager at WFM Radio and news reporter as well, and with me is Brett Cox. I'm also a board president of the Enrichment Corporation. And Brett Cox is a vice president, assistant general manager of Blue Chip Casino as well as vice president of the MCCEC Board. Uh, Gail told me I have eight minutes, so I got to look at the clock real quick. Uh, but interestingly enough, before I start, I, I want to mention, um, because I was thinking about that, I told Gail, I sat in that seat over there, the third seat from the end for over twenty-five years, as a news reporter twice a month. And I told the council a number of years ago that I did some calculations and I had attended more council meetings than all nine of the council members combined. But then COVID came along. And so I sit in my living room with my lunch, or my dinner on my lap and watch the meeting on Alco and I don't have to sit through the meeting, so I love it much more. But, uh, was mentioning with Councilman Beatry, we all have our, I, I want to mention this before I get started because, uh, if I hadn't planned to do this, but we all have our, um, special focuses and in Councilman Beatry's, uh, it was art space and the rep, the, uh, renovation of the Warren Building and he lived, ate and slept that for years, in Shannon Neeson's case, it's been trails. And we have an outstanding trail system in, in Michigan City for both walking and biking. And they probably wouldn't be there without Shannon, she won't take the credit for it, but people that know, know that she has spent years looking for money, looking, uh, cutting down the red tape and making sure that those trails are there and she's, she's really made those trails an asset as part of Michigan City and I want to recognize that. And I'm going to tell you two quick stories, first of all, Brett has heard this a couple of times. Clarence Holes and I, uh, made a presentation several years ago before the Indiana Gaming Commission. And, uh, some representatives of Blue Chip were there. My presentation, of course, was about the Enrichment Corporation and I mentioned to them that there are a lot of, of gaming companies in the United States. Ours is Boyd Gaming and we are fortunate to have Boyd Gaming as the gaming operator in Michigan City. Because not all of the companies are dedicated to the community the way Boyd Gaming is and, and, uh, we have an outstanding relationship with them. Uh, I've served for the last ten year, or eight of the last ten years on the Enrichment Corporation Board. Uh, the two years that I didn't serve, I was emcee of the awards banquet, which we're going to mention in a few minutes. And so I thought maybe it was time for me to step away because my term and Brett's term are up at the end of March. Mayor Deitch asked me to, uh, if I'd consider serving another term. And basically, when I found out Brett was willing to serve another that term as well, then it made the situation a whole lot easier because he's been such a, a, a valuable asset. But I want to quickly mention the other members because there are nine volunteer members of the Enrichment Corporation. Candace Adams, Dan Granquist, Jason Kirby, Craig Hinchman, Stacy Benton, Jacob Moonehan, myself and, uh, and Brett and Ken Fly, who's on your agenda later, and I'll be talking about Ken in a few minutes. Uh, the Enrichment Corporation, oh, I, I did want to tell you one more quick thing and that is uh, all of you or many of you know that Judge Alavisos is retiring at the end of the year after a, uh, stellar term on the Circuit Court bench. And a lot of people don't know that years ago, he sat where Don's sitting right now, he was city council president. And then he went on to serve in the, the state legislature. Uh, and while he was representative, he was in the legislature when the original gaming ordinance was considered by the Indiana General Assembly. And when it came out of the General Assembly at the end of their regular session, there were only four riverboats. There was two in Gary, there was one in East Chicago and there was one in Hammond, but none in Michigan City. Now, if you remember, there were, there were referendums just prior to that, Porter County said, no, we don't want a riverboat. LaPorte County, every community and every township in LaPorte County said, no, we don't want a riverboat except Michigan City. Tim, I think you were on that committee, were you not? I thought you were. There was a committee that was formed to sell the riverboat concept to the city of Michigan City and they did such a good job that the plurality in Michigan City overcame all of the negative votes in the rest of the county and that's why we have a riverboat. But, uh, all of those entities continue to receive money every year, uh, and they certainly don't, uh, turn it back. They start getting it after all these years. Um, and so we, we're, we're fortunate to have the riverboat, but Representative Alavisos was, was in the legislature and it was a budget year, so they had to call the legislature back to special session to pass a budget. Tom said, and he angered a lot of people doing it, I will not vote for the budget unless Michigan City has the fifth riverboat on Lake Michigan. A lot of people in Indianapolis didn't want to give it to us, but Tom said, I'm firm. Made some enemies, left the legislature not too long after that. But one of the reasons why we have a riverboat in, in LaPorte County is because of Judge Alavisos and, uh, he squirms every time I tell that story because he hopes people won't remember it, but he's, he's, he's modest the way Shannon is, he's modest the way Tim is. Uh, they do things for this community, we have a lot of those. The Enrichment Corporation was originally formed from the original operating agreement between Blue Chip and the original operator, I mean, uh, the original operator of Blue Chip and the city of Michigan City. And it provided seven hundred fifty thousand dollars be paid to the Enrichment Corporation every year. Uh, the first one hundred thousand dollars, thanks to our then, uh, city attorney, uh, the late Rob Beckman, who went on to serve as county prosecutor. Rob was such a, a huge, uh, proponent of the zoo that he mandated that the first one hundred thousand dollars go to the zoo. And, um, to this day, that's what happened, in fact, just a few months ago, we presented the twenty-twenty-three sec, check to the zoo and you start thinking how many years the riverboat's been there and a hundred thousand a year. Uh, that money has gone a long way toward helping the zoo be able to expand the way it is and we can all remember when the zoo just about went away, there was a, a movement uh, on the park board to close down the zoo and the community said, no, we're not going to do that. And, uh, I think the Enrichment Corporation's money certainly helped in revitalizing the zoo. The other six hundred fifty thousand dollars every year, our nine-member volunteer board gets together, we accept applications. My first year on the board ten years ago is when we switched from paper applications to, uh, computer, uh, uh, internet applications. Uh, and, uh, we accept applications not from organizations, but for projects. And, uh, we accept the applications, we go through them, we determine how much money each one gets and then we make the awards and I'm going to touch on that in just a second. But the board, not me, but the board, I've, I've said from the time I came back to the board two years ago, that we are a nine-member board, if five members have a feeling about something, that's what we do. And we've done that all of, through all of this. These ideas were not mine, but through the current cycle, we limited the amount of money to an individual project of thirty thousand dollars. There were several organizations got up to fifty thousand dollars and they deserved it, the Salvation Army Food Pantry, for example. We cut that to a maximum of thirty thousand dollars because we wanted to award more programs, we wanted to spread the money around. And, um, uh, I know that, that, that means that some of the organizations, which we know are great organizations, doesn't get quite as much money, but as you'll see, we spent the money around. The second thing we did is each organization was allowed to submit no more than three programs. And they had to rank those, one, two and three, as to what they felt were the most important programs. We had seventy-one programs in our grant application process this year and the total amount requested was one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Out of that one, almost one point two million, we had six hundred and forty thousand dollars to award. We met about, uh, four weeks ago at, uh, Blue Chip, Blue Chip, uh, one of the things that the board members do look forward to is we always have our deliberations at Blue Chip. So, we had an early dinner, which they provided, and then we did our deliberations. Some of you have heard over the past couple of years, and I'm going to address this in a minute, there've been some animosity and some discourse and so forth on the MCCEC Board. But I can tell you, we did the deliberations and awarded six hundred thirty-nine thousand and change in a little less than two and a half hours. Of the sixty-one applications we received, we funded forty-six. And we noted that, see if I can find the number here, of the ones we funded, um, let me see, where does it there? Over fifteen percent of the organizations received no money last year. So, we accomplished our goal of spreading the money around, of funding new organizations. And one of the things we wanted to do is because, I mean, we know the Salvation Armies in this world, we know the Dune Brooks, we know the organizations that are established and that we know that they'll spend the money well. There are new organizations out there that want to get started, they want to serve their community. And it's even, it's more, it's difficult enough for not-for-profits to, uh, find money these days as it is, but if you're a new organization starting out, it becomes even more difficult, as I'm sure you're aware. So, we put a cap of three thousand dollars on any new applications that we had not funded in the past. Uh, to, to let them see what, you know, how they use the money and make sure they use it properly. But we were able to fund forty-six out of those sixty-one applications. And what we're going to do, what, what we do then is twice a year, they have to provide, uh, updates as to how the money was spent. Because the nine volunteer board members feel like that's our money and we're going to make sure that it's spent the way that it's supposed to. We actually have asked for grants back in some cases or had money partially refunded because it wasn't spent the way it was, uh, portrayed in the grant application. So, we're, we're pretty particular about that. Uh, we have some, now that the grant process is over, uh, we, we have some projects that will go on this summer, we're going to further review the grant application process and as I said, ten years ago, when I came on the board, we went to the internet for the first time, we're going to revise our, our, um, uh, website for the first time in ten years and try to make it more user-friendly. And that gets me to Ken Fly. Ken Fly is on your agenda later tonight to be reappointed by the council uh, to another three-year term on the Enrichment Corporation. I will tell you that when I came on two years ago, I came on in part because I had heard that there were some difficulties with the board. And I can tell you, there was some difficulties with the board. There was a lot of turnover in the first year of board members. We changed our attorney, uh, Mary Lake, after she left the prosecutor's office, went to work for the University of Notre Dame. Uh, we changed our executive director, who a year, a little over a year ago abruptly resigned with no notice. Uh, and right after our grant cycle, in fact, we were in the middle of awarding the checks. So, uh, Pat Harris stepped in and she's done an exceptional job, doing a great job. But Ken Fly and a couple of others, uh, caused some difficulties with the board, quite frankly. And they were passionate about what they felt, but they just weren't, uh, uh, approaching it properly to the point that I approached a then council president, Deitch, and then Mayor Perry and ask about the procedures for removing Ken from the board. And, uh, he came to me a few weeks later, he apologized. He told me that he thought his, uh, actions were inappropriate. He later apologized to the board and he has become a very, very important member of our nine-member volunteer board. And I would urge you to reappoint him for the three-year term when that comes up on your agenda tonight. Um, and the only other thing I want to say about that, that is, we've also been asked about conflict of interest. Two of our board members and Ken of them is one of them, Candace Adams from Anthony Adams House is the other. Uh, both of them have received funds and, and actually are in the current grant cycle. Uh, and there are those that are saying, well, maybe that's a conflict of interest, maybe you shouldn't have uh, grant applicants that are on the board. We've discussed that three times in the last two years and the board has felt that the positives outweigh the negatives and I'll explain. We feel like having two organizations that are small organizations uh, that have to fill out the grant process is of value to us. And when we figure out how to structure those grant applications and how we allocate the money. When we went to the deliberation projects a few weeks ago, both Ken, when his came up, Candace, when hers came up, and Attorney Bee Ge, when one, an organization that he's involved with came up, they excused themselves, they left the room, we discussed it and, uh, then we voted appropriately, so we feel like we've handled the conflict of interest, um, issue, I discussed it with Mayor Deitch yesterday. I don't see her here. Oh, Ken, Ken is here, Ken Fly is here. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have talked so glowingly about you if I knew you were here. But, um, I talked to Mayor Deitch yesterday and she said you either was going to come to the city council meeting or go to the basketball game tonight, and I said, with all due respect to the council, go to the basketball game. So, so anyway, uh, so we feel like, uh, having, uh, those small organizations represented is a positive. And we've discussed it on a number of occasions, I said, it's the majority of the board makes those decisions. Out of the forty-six projects that we, uh, funded this year, there were thirty-three votes out of forty-one, where, uh, uh, at a forty-six, were nine to nothing. There were two of them were eight to nothing with one abstention and there were six of them that were eight to one. So, the vast majority, all but a handful of votes were overwhelmingly in favor of the project, so I think that says a lot about the, uh, the, the spirit of working together, uh, of collab, a corap, a collaboration, collaboration, oop, E V Z, collaboration. And also, um, the fact that we in less than two and a half hours were able to hand out six hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, I said, I think it says a lot about the board that So I think it says a lot about the board that we have, and I'm very happy and very proud with the board that we have. The final thing that I'll mention is on Thursday, March twenty-first, we have our awards banquet at Blue Chip. And that's when uh we will hand out the checks to the organization. I ran into uh uh county commission president uh uh Connie Grammerosa on Saturday. She attended last year as a guest, and she asked me if she could buy a table to be at that banquet. I haven't told Brett this yet. And yes, I'll get to that in a second too, but yes, I told her she could because she said, I was just amazed by finding out about these organizations that serve Michigan City, what they're doing and how they're they're serving this community. I want to come back again, and I want to bring more people from the county. So she's going to buy a table to our banquet. All nine of the members of the city council will be invited, the mayor will be invited, but it's only one invitation. I get one invitation, Brett gets one invitation, the board member get one invitation. If you want to bring a guest, you can pay a a fee for the dinner. But our feeling is, if we allow you to be two people, we allow us to be two people. We allow a few other people to be two people. How many hundreds or thousands of dollars of that that are going to dinners instead of going to not-for-profits? So we try to limit the amount of uh money that we spend uh on guests. We want all of you to be there. Don has come on several occasions. Uh and that's what what uh the people that come are taking away from it. I do every year, I've gone to, I've been at ten in a row, and I can tell you, I come away from there amazed by the the dedication and the hard work of our not-for-profits in the Michigan City area. So that's the Enrichment Corporation. Uh as I said, we've got some projects that we'll do in the summer, and the grant cycle will begin uh in the fall. If anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them for you.
Any questions, any comments?
I just had one comment. I uh, Ryan, I want to thank you for uh taking this responsibility. I know all these volunteers put in a lot of time, going through all these applications and funding it. By the way, this deciding whom to fund and whom not to fund, it's a very difficult choice because sometimes they're, both, all of them uh uh have very, very good uh projects that they want to support. So I want to, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank all of you for your service.
It's not easy, isn't it? Because we know these organizations, a lot of them, we know the people involved. It's not easy sometimes saying no. Uh but again, we wanted to fund the largest percentage of applications we could, and I think we really accomplished that this year. Any other questions?
Councilman Nelson?
I just want to clarify, you said you're going to cap it next fall to three thousand?
No, what we did was, uh the the applications are capped at thirty thousand dollars. But if there's a new organization that has never applied before, we we cap the app, the application at three thousand dollars for a new applicant that has never received funding from us before. And what that does is it gives them some money, but it also gives us a chance to monitor how they use that money. Make sure they understand that if they present a project, that it has to be used for that project and and spent so forth. Uh and we've had some that the first year, we've given them a minimum amount, we see that they're they're doing what they said they would do. And we'll up the grant, or they may ask for more money, and we'll up the allocation the next year. So it's a balance, and we're, again, that's another one of the things that we'll review this year in the grant application to see whether three thousand dollars makes sense or what what amount makes sense. But that way then, we, as I said, we funded more organizations this year than we didn't fund last year, over fifteen percent of them. Almost sixteen percent organizations received no funding at all last year. Anything else?
I just want to make uh one comment. Uh Mr. Miller, I want to thank you. Mr. Cox, I want to thank you for your hard work and effort on this. And Mr. Kenny Fly, appreciate all you do for this uh organization. And I know it's a great, I know it's great, the money goes organizations, and it's well-spent, and it's all comes back to the community, and that's fantastic. So thank you for all your hard work and effort.
And Kenny's organization, Fly High Youth, is a good, a good example, and he's going to get embarrassed when I say this, but um he mentors young people. And so last summer, I was able to arrange for him to take a group of his kids to USD O'Yard in Gary for a a baseball game. And instead of sitting in the stands, we sat in the owner's suite behind home plate. And this was something that these kids had never experienced before. Uh and to watch Kenny with these kids, I mean, he drove them over on the bus, he took them up to the the suite. Uh we had hot dogs and hamburgers and pop and sat out on the patio behind home plate and watched the game. Uh but that's an example of a a small organization that's trying to get started. And quite frankly, in the beginning, had a lot of difficulty getting funding. And those are the kind of organizations we want to fund, assuming that they do what Ken does, and that is that use the money the way that it's supposed to be used. And so uh Ken's organization is a perfect example. And again, that's one of the reasons why we value the fact that he's on the board, because he can bring that knowledge and that experience from a uh an organization standpoint uh to the board.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Fly, for all you do for Michigan City. Now the women's commission can come up and present.
Good evening, President Bl- President Blitsky and council.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Jones, and currently I am the president of the Michigan City Commissions for Women. And our mission is to ensure equal opportunity for all Michigan City citizens to participate in the economy, government, education, social development, justice system, and all facets of life. My purpose here this evening is to um announce um the International Women's Day that is approaching March the eighth. The International Women's Day is a global day celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. The day also marks a call for action to accelerating women's equality. The Women's Commission is hosting a um free luncheon. And that will be hosted on Friday, March the eighth, at Krieger Memorial Park, Eight-O-One Liberty Trail, Michigan City, Indiana. And we're, we are inviting you all to attend this event. We're excited about it. Uh we're going to have several speakers, uh we're going to have panel discussions. Again, the public is invited, it's a free lunch, and we would um like you all to attend and support us.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Tillman.
Um so for the um for the luncheon, can you provide us with a start time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh the start time, yes, it's eleven-thirty AM, and it concludes at two PM.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, I have some flyers for you all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, ladies, and I know I attended last year's lunch. Thank you. And if my calendar is uh free, I will be there again this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also want to say, my name is Angela Carter. Um I want to say thank you to the city council.
Yeah.
I want to thank you, uh the city council for nominating me as one of the women for the women's commissions. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, I think uh we are done with reports from boards and commissions, and reports of special or select committees, which there are none. Reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments. So I see the mayor's here, and she didn't go to the basketball game, so. She's here with us.
I was working still. Uh good evening, everybody. Um just want to give a quick update on a couple of things. Um last week, I spent some time down in Indianapolis, ma- meeting with some legislators. Um I know tomorrow, uh there's a hearing on lifesaving equipment for lakefront communities like Michigan City. With uh the Coast Guard and the Manning um situation, I know um I met with Chuck Mosley, Representative Mosley, and Representative Boy. And I know there's a hearing on some additional uh lifesaving measures, equipment um on for Lake Michigan. So one of the things that, when I met with the uh the commander um two weeks ago, we talked about a grant that is going to become available here in the next week or two. Um I don't know if there's a match um that's um that has to be presented with that yet, but I will give you an update. Not at the next meeting, I won't be there, it's my birthday on that day, so I won't be at your meeting. But um we know that um we need a a fire boat um of some sort, so um hopefully uh with this grant, we can cover the cost for that. And then see if the state passes something, maybe that will give us a little bit more oomph, and maybe they can put some dollars towards that as well. Um I think there's, there's only a few communities impacted by this, but again, we talk about the distance between the stations, and we know that our fire department, our police department are going to have to be the first line of defense um in those situations. So um more to come on that. Um but I I did want to give you an update on that. The other thing, uh today, we had our uh a staff meeting this morning, um our third one. And uh one of the things that we presented, the, all of the departments have the documents now for the internship program. So there's going to be an open house for college students on March thirteenth here at City Hall. Uh it's spring break for the majority of the Indiana schools. So uh we'll at, the uh departments are filling out that information if they want to intern, and some have already turned in stuff already, which is interesting, but uh for projects that they would like to see. And so we're going to um send this out to all of those schools, and you know, if we have some people that want to come through and interview or um, you know, fill out an application, they'll be able to do so. So uh from the department heads, uh the deadline for them to turn in the information is March fifth so that we can get a list of projects, we can kind of vet them and make sure um these are areas, you know, it's going to be, you know, based on the best projects, that's who's going to get those interns, right? Um but if we could fill all the slots, that would be great. So we, we anticipate twenty to twenty-five uh interns for the summer. And then uh so March thirteenth would be the date, and then IU Northwest is having, I don't know who sent that to me, but thank you. Um is having a college fair, um like a job fair as well, that Ms. Keela Ward will be attending that too in April. So the goal is to get a good um group of of students that are more local. Um I know there'd be some opportunities where they won't be um for specialized things, but again, the goal is to get some projects done for the city um and use um college students to do it. So um that is my um report for today. Any questions for me?
Where can I get some more information on the internship? Is that something that's going to be passed out or emailed?
You all will receive an email. Um the flyer is already done. I'm not sure if she's sent that out yet. I think they had a couple of edits for it, but the flyer for the actual um career fair, Michigan City Career Fair, is already done. I think they just had some edits that they had to put on it, so you'll all receive a copy of that. Any other questions?
Any other questions? So the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Are there any other city department heads that'd like to speak to the council at this time?
Good evening, council. Jeff Brewer, Fire Marshal, Michigan City. Um I sent out an email this morning, uh hopefully everybody got it. Um it's regarding uh me requesting a workshop for some um uh programs that I want to uh develop for the inspection department and the fire department. It's a third-party reporting. Uh I have some information on it, take a while for me to explain it. That's why I think um I'm going to bring a representative in, that way we can get a workshop together. Just the the basics of it is uh third-party reporting to the fire department. If there's an issue with someone's um property or building as far as a sprinkler system or alarm system, um it gets reported. Sometimes when there are deficiencies, they don't always make it to the fire department, and we, obviously, we can't be everywhere all the time. So what they do is they send it to a third-party company who then sends us the report. As far as trying to, I'm trying to build a more efficient inspection program with the fire department. This is just another tool for our bag. Um I think it's important. Uh the the great thing is it doesn't cost the city anything, but the company um really suggests that we put it in ordinance form, and that's the reason for the, for the workshop. Uh it gives us a little more teeth in the game, especially if uh there are reoccurring violators or, you know, non-compliant uh businesses, which um we do have a few out there. Um we need to, you know, clean that, clean that area up, uh part of the city. So um this is my formal request for the, for the workshop, and I hope we can get this uh, get this going. Um we have some new reporting software that we're trying to instill uh as far as um our run reports, our pre-plans, our inspections, and this goes hand in hand with that. So we'd like to get this up and running, that way it can be uh incorporated with our uh our day-to-day schedules and um reporting.
Okay, uh Chief, so what, what, and the chief and I had a discussion, you know, today about this workshop, possibly what date, you know, we could have it and what time. But I still wanted him to come to the meeting to explain to the council exactly what the workshop, the basis of the workshop is. So I'm going to call the uh the clerk tomorrow, and we will set up a date and a time. I already have a tentative date of March the seventh at five-thirty in the evening, so everybody that has to work during the day has time to, you know, get here and uh attend the uh, attend the workshop.
I did put a attachment on everyone's email. Um if you read through that, there are some videos on YouTube that you can take a look at, kind of give you an idea of what we'd be talking about. Um and like I said, there'll be a representative there to to discuss any of the questions that you guys have and and how the cost structure goes, but again, it doesn't cost the city anything, it's passed on, passed along. So um I think this is important, I think this is good for the city, it's good for for the inspection department. Uh and like I said, another tool for our bag.
Okay, thank you, chief. Thank you for coming. Uh Mr. Kalavich?
Uh this is Tommy Kalavich. I believe you skipped over your board and commission requirement. Just want to say I'm the, your common council appointee to the Michigan City Fire Merit Commission. We still don't have a a a league council liaison to our committee. I know we've had that. Um you know, you need to have a workshop, all you council members should realize, when you all became a council member, you have to take on your liaison committee assignments. Um
Kalavich, can I stop you?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh the liaison appointments to the different boards and committees was completed last week, right? Because we had to wait for a consignment, a consignment to the fourth ward to be voted in. So then me, as council president and Councilwoman Tillman, we sat down and put the appointments together. We couldn't assume anybody was going to be in a particular seat. We had to wait till the actual election took place. And then we started filling in the names. So it hasn't been, had nobody, has not attended their assigned responsibilities from the city council. Things took place, now they're resolved, and now we're going to move forward. So at your next commission meeting, Councilwoman Daisy Lee is going to be the liaison to the fire commission, and she will be there.
Well, may I continue? We, the local four-seventy-five or President Nick Babone, he has a list of amendments that he wants to make to our fire merit ordinance. They're very simple, common sense, very outdated ordinance that he wants to change. I agree with all of them. Uh this is kind of a carryover from last year. Our main point last year was our final determination rating, which is section fifty-four dash one fifty-six. We did a great job with that. That was also to, although I've been at, we changed this to kind of reflect the state of fire merit statute when we began, January, July first, we get, so we can start taking applications up to forty years old. They're actually having a, they're actually having an issue with this in La Porte with their fire chief right now, big brouhaha at their meeting right now. But you know, we we just need, we just want to have this workshop and get this all finalized. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Daisy Lee will be there at your next commission meeting to take on all the information, and she'll get done what has to get to take on all the information, and she'll get done what has to get done, thank you. Good evening, Chief.
President, Chris Malinsky, thank you, uh for those that I have not met with, I am Dave Cooney, I'm Chief of Services with the Michigan City Police Department. Uh, Chief Corley wasn't available today and asked that I pass on some information. Talking about our numbers, we had a retirement this month of Kelly Williams, he had twenty-six years of service with the police department. Uh, we wish him well on his retirement. Uh, we had a resignation of Officer Trevor Lenover, he had a year and a half on, that was effective on Friday, February sixteenth. Um, at the last police commission meeting, we presented the Chris Smith Award uh to our Officer Daniel Ravor. Uh, for those that don't know what the Officer Chris Smith Award is, Chris Smith was an officer with the Michigan City Police Department from September fifth, two thousand and six, until his death from cancer on December twenty-eighth, two thousand and seven, at the young age of twenty-five. Chris Smith embodied a fresh spirit, love and dedication of the professional law enforcement. Chris Smith had penned the following, thank you to then-Chief uh Ben Nitzel just months before his courageous battle with cancer from passing. "It is not often dreams come true, but I worked with perseverance until I achieve mine, I will work equally hard to keep it." Uh, every year we give this award out uh to an officer that we feel fits uh what he embodied, and Officer Ravor uh fit that bill for us for twenty-twenty-three. Uh, just wanted to pass that along, uh with the retirement and the resignation, uh our current numbers, we are at eighty, again, we're allotted eighty-four officers, uh so we're just short of that. Um, we have eight probationary officers at the academy, four in the field training program, two of those are lateral hires, they do not need to go to the academy. We have six uh from this recent hiring in the beginning of February uh that are with our training division. Uh, they will be going to the academy in April. Along with uh two of the two that are in the FTO as well that aren't the laterals. Uh, we have another lateral that went to perf, he's an applicant, uh we're hoping to hire him here in a month, that'll get our numbers back to eighty-four, or I'm sorry, eighty-one. And then we just did, we have um for the first time in a long time, we have an eligibility list, we have five that have completed the background investigation. Um, so penning uh how many positions we have left, they'll be ranked uh one through five. Uh, three of those will hopefully go to to perf for the retirement evaluation. Uh, we also had a hiring event uh this past Saturday, uh we had thirteen applications, uh twelve showed up, and then four were able to complete that first part of the the test. So we have four that are moving on to the background investigation as well, so I feel we're doing pretty good. Any questions?
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, you you mentioned a total of eighty, and you started naming it some in the academy, so how many are street-ready right now? I was trying to do the math in my head.
Okay, um so currently, we think of how we have this laid out, we have eleven patrolmen on each shift, so that would be thirty-three that are in uniform and as well as our supervisors, so we have four supervisors each shift on top of that, and then Corporal Wright as well. And then everybody else that we have is pretty much distributed between the Detective Bureau, Warrants Traffic, or I'm sorry, not Traffic, um Fast and the Drug Unit, um I would say, let me do the math here real quick, unless somebody's faster than me. Yeah, I would say we're close to about. The the issue with like the way I wrote out my numbers, I apologize, because we have people that are, again, the FTOs moving in from the academy, so once these eight from the academy come back in April, that'll help our numbers, because then the other number, the other six will go to the academy, so um we're probably looking at about sixty-five right now, still, I mean, it's still a process, I think um a year from now, or even, you know, eight to ten months, we'll be in a much better place um to be able to fulfill the the patrol, I think. Like I said, we have eleven officers per shift right now, and I think we'd be much better equipped to handle a lot of things at like fifteen per shift is what we're hoping to get back to, so. Sorry, I probably did not answer your question.
Any other questions of the chief? Councilman Beatry?
My my question isn't really for the chief, it's for the fire marshal, but I was slow on the draw, you're out of practice or something. The Don asked, as President of the uh of the council, were you contemplating assigning uh that workshop through the standing committee for city council, like through maybe public health and safety, or were you calling a special one?
Oh, you know, Councilman Beatry, I didn't even look at that, I was just for a whole council uh workshop, yeah. Uh, that's the way I'd like to do it, just have the whole council there and they can see, hear exactly what's going on with this company.
Okay.
Yeah. But thanks for bringing that up, I didn't even look at that. Okay, thank you, Chief, uh no other uh department heads here that I'm, I can see, uh moving on? Madam Clerk, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Any communications?
In accordance with ordinance four-five-three-eight, the Clerk's Office received the following incident reports from the Michigan City Police Department on February twelfth regarding accidents that took place on the following dates, January eleventh, January twelfth, January eighteenth, the twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth, and the thirty-first.
Okay, and just for the councils, uh I believe I passed out ordinance forty-five thirty-eight to all the council members, did I? If I didn't, I apologize, because I will. Pardon?
Last meeting.
Yeah, last meeting, and I'll get one to you, Mr. uh Councilman Beatry. Yeah, I'll get you one, and and what that is, and that's why these reports come to the city council, and what's in that ordinance is if there's any damage to any city equipment, whether it's a lawnmower, whether it's a snowplow, whether it's a police car, whatever it is, if it's over fifteen hundred dollars, we're gonna know about it. For accountability, and just so we know what's going on in the city with this equipment when things get damaged. And then I think there's also a line in there for uh theft, anything over, I don't know, I think, let's just say a hundred dollars, anything over a hundred dollars is reported to the city council also. So that's what's in that ordinance, and if you didn't, I thought I gave my last meeting, I did, but if you don't have it, give me a holler and I'll get you another copy. Okay, just for your own knowledge. All right, uh resolutions before us this uh evening?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Promis Scholarship Fund two-three-one-two for the year twenty-twenty-four in Michigan City, Indiana, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And does the sponsor have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Yes, uh, real quick, these are uh transfers within the Promis Scholarship Fund, uh taking money out of contractual services to add uh spike uh perf and things like that, uh there're gonna be some rearranging of that, um the position of the Promis Scholarship in a different name, I'm gonna go through that when we get to those ordinances, uh talk about a little bit later, but this is what's happening uh with those resolutions, it's basically just moving money with inside the uh the Promis Scholarship Committee, so there's no new dollars coming in right now, it's just, like I said, moving money within uh that department.
Okay, anyone from the public which is speak on this resolution, anyone from the public?
Oh yeah, Tommy Kalavich, uh anything we can do to expand the Michigan City Promis
Address, please.
Thirteen Ohio Street, anything we can do to expand the Michigan City Promis Scholarship, I'm I'm all for it. Uh, my my, Queen is old as daughter of Mira, I said, I'm happy to now, you know, continuing my family's fine tradition of excellence at the Michigan City Schools. She is being student of the month at uh Edwood Elementary School, no doubt in my mind, she's gonna be a recipient of Michigan City Promis Scholarship. We won everything else at school, we're gonna win that too, I'm very happy to have Tim Beatry back as our uh city councilman, we have a very education-heavy council now. I know Tim Beatry was our principal, Dr. Vidiacora is our school board president, Nancy Mar, retired school teacher, Daisy Lee, a good teacher at Barker. Uh, I think it's, you know, there's no greater knowledge than one can gift that somebody can do to impart their knowledge and wisdom onto others, and I fully support this, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public which is speak on this resolution, anyone else in the public which is speak, having none? Council comments on this resolution, Councilman Dabney?
I was waiting to see if you were asking, I was gonna say motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Prezwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, our next resolution by title only?
Resolution by title only, a re- a resolution recognizing and honoring, celebrating Naomi Anderson Day on March first annually and in uh, there's that word, perpetuity. Perpetu- okay, Bush.
Perpetuity.
Practice it, too. Um, and this is introduced by Ms. Moldenauer, Mr. Prezwalinski, Ms. Lee, and Ms. Tillman.
And do the sponsors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilwoman Moldenauer?
Mr. President, um I would love to have the opportunity to read this resolution, please.
Sure.
Recognizing and honoring, celebrating Naomi Anderson Day on March first annually and in perpetuity. Whereas Naomi Bowman-Talbert Anderson was born in Michigan City, Indiana on March first, eighteen forty-three, to free blacks Elijah Angilly and Bowman, and. Whereas Naomi Anderson was initially barred from attending the segregated public schools until the school read her poetry, and then she was admitted to public school in Michigan City, Indiana, which was the only formal education she received, and. Whereas at age twenty-six, Naomi Anderson spoke at the First Women's Rights Convention held in Chicago, Illinois, becoming a public figure known throughout the country as a controversial and fiery speaker, and. Whereas Naomi Anderson's writings were published in hundreds of newspapers throughout the United States, and she spoke to tens of thousands of people during her lifetime, advocating for human rights, women's right to vote, temperance, orphans, and for, quote, "A solution to the race problem," unquote, and. Whereas with great courage, Naomi Anderson was known throughout the country for her eloquence, moral force, and life of activism, while fighting the dual oppression of being both a person of color and female, and. Whereas in the year twenty-twenty, the Michigan City Main Street Association and Celebrating Naomi Anderson Project Team received an Indiana Humanities and Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, quote, "Preserving Women's Legacy," unquote, grant for recognizing Naomi Anderson with a sculpture designed by Bernard Williams, honoring her life, which has been installed in Charles R. Westcott Park at US thirty-five and US twelve in Michigan City, Indiana, and. Whereas due to circumstances of history, Naomi Anderson has not received the national recognition which she so richly deserves, although she was a dynamic force leaving an indelible mark on American history and well beyond nineteen ninety-nine, the year she passed on, leaving it to her hometown to honor this daughter of Michigan City. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana honors the indelible mark on American history made by Michigan City native Naomi Anderson by naming March first annually in perpetuity, celebrating Naomi Anderson Day in Michigan City, Indiana. This resolution shall be in full force and e- effect after passage by the Michigan City Common Council and the approval by the mayor. And I want to thank my co-sponsors, President Don, Chris Malinsky, and City Councilwomen, um Daisy Lee, and also Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Councilwoman, any uh other comments from the sponsors? Well, I'll just say, I wish I could have been, I wish I had the opportunity to meet Naomi Anderson and to learn so much from her, uh who knows, maybe I could have been a different person just by learning and and, you know, what what she had to offer, what she had to offer in Michigan City. But the thing that really gets me the most about how I guess she was treated is the fact that she was barred from attending segregated, you know, public schools here in Michigan City uh back in the day, only until they read her poetry, and then they admitted her to the public school system. That's that's just, that's terrible, nobody should ever be denied in uh in education, and uh but I'm very proud to be on this resolution, and I think everything that's been done for this woman is well-deserved. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, um I just want to thank uh Councilwoman Moldenauer for writing this very eloquent resolution, nicely done, I appreciate that, and if it is not too late, I would like to be added as a a co-sponsor to this resolution.
You please uh add Councilman Cora as a co-sponsor?
Thank you.
And um in the name of transparency and full disclosure, um a lot of this was written by Bonnie Schaaf, um who co-chaired the Celebrating Naomi Anderson on project team with me and um seven other members of our community.
Okay, thank you, anyone from the uh public?
Willa Fay Moore, five-one-five Grace Street, Michigan City. Yes, I hope that you guys pass this resolution, uh Cheryl Chapman has also um written a book and um with pictures in it and everything about Naomi Anderson. And um she has been going into the public schools of Michigan City, uh reading her book in the Boys and Girls Club, and um somebody else helped her with that, I forgot, but anyway, so please pass that resolution. I was one of the members working on the Naomi Anderson Project, and we worked hard during COVID, so we appreciate it. And just to remind everybody, the beautiful sculpture on the boulevard, please visit it as often as you can during the summer.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Public comment?
Yeah, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixty in Ohio, so I finally encourage all to pass this wherever a resolution or ordinance, so you know, that's great, we can educate people about Naomi, uh March first, it is a very significant day for for Michigan City, I think we can get into that later, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Anyone else in the public which is speak on this resolution, having none, council comments on this resolution?
I want to acknowledge this idea actually came from a young member of the Michigan City Boys and Girls Club that we should declare March first um as Naomi Anderson Day, so.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Motion to support.
Second.
There's a motion to support by Councilwoman Tillman and a second by Councilman Dabney. Ms. Nylam on the vote?
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
And Mr. Prezwalinski?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylam, our third resolution tonight by title only?
Resolution by title only, determining the funding for certain outstanding purchase orders should be encumbered and authorizing a city controller to encumber such funds, and this is introduced by Mr. Prezwalinski.
And the city controller is here this evening. Mary Lynn will come down and explain if uh, and if you have any questions, you can direct them to her.
Hi, good evening, Mary Lynn Law, City Controller. Uh, what you have are all purchased, these are all projects and or pieces of equipment that were previously approved in prior years. Um, and a lot of this was either on order and and hasn't been paid for yet, or projects that are still ongoing. So this is not any additional appropriations or any additional budget items. So you've got it all listed here, and all we're all we're asking is that these can get moved forward into twenty-twenty-four. Um, and this is something that we do every year, that all these um this, all the purchase orders need to be approved by the council, because these are riverboat and or rainy day approved approved budget items, but once again, these were all approved in prior years.
Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Thank you, Mary Lynn.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public? Wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Having none, council comments? Councilwoman Tracy Tillman?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, I just, for the record, want to, um, indicate what the encumbered funds amount total, purchase orders altogether is five million three hundred forty-five thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars. And that was for approximately thirteen, um, purchase orders.
Any other comments from council members? Councilman Dabney?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Beatry. Ms. Nylem on the vote?
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Prezwalinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And Ms. Nylem, our first ordinance this evening on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending various sections in chapter thirty-eight of the Michigan City Municipal Code to change your Promise Scholarship Exceptions Committee to a Promise Scholarship Review Committee and redefine the duties and responsibilities of the Director and Site Committee. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And as a sponsor, have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Yes, I do. Um, what we're doing here is we had a Promise Scholarship Review Committee and what they did was, you know, if the people had, uh, issues, like they needed to make the, the grades or something to that effect, they could review or, uh, ask for a review, um, of their situation to see if they could still be awarded the Promise Scholarship. What's going on now, we're gonna call this, uh, the responsibility's gonna be, where there's gonna be an active board of people that will be more involved with actually awarding the scholarship, uh, as well. So instead of the, um, the review committee, I had it here and it's gonna be the, it's called, it's not the review committee anymore, it is gonna be the Exceptions Committee. Um, but anyway, what's gonna happen is that there's gonna, they're gonna be more active and, uh, actively involved in awarding the Promise Scholarship rather than just waiting for, uh, issues to come up for review.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance?
Yep.
Anyone from the public?
Well, I gotta correct.
Yeah, we're not under council comments yet. Uh, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, council comments, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, just to clarify, I actually had the, the names, uh, backwards on that. It used to be the Exceptions Committee and now gonna be called the Review Committee. Uh, but those duties are still gonna be the same, but I, I gave, put the names in the, in the wrong, uh, spot there. So just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dabney. Any other comments from council members? Councilman Nelson?
How are these committee members selected?
Currently, we have a, an Exceptions Committee or a, uh, a, uh, committee out there that already does the, the, you know, I wish, I wanna say complaints, that's not, you know, what's going on. But if somebody were to challenge a ruling where they did not receive the award, there's already people out there. Uh, personally, I think we should almost create another, uh, liaison from the council to be on there well, as well. I will talk to the mayor about that and, uh, plan on doing a, uh, workshop with this. I'm gonna get the, the proper date so we're not double booking. We, we can get this done, uh, probably next week. Uh, but there's already people out there on the, the committee right now, but I'm sure, um, I, I think that we should also have somebody as a council liaison involved with this as well, so.
Okay, if I could, cause I remember as far as the appointments to this committee, I know that, uh, the city council had an appointment, his name is Ryan Labus. He used to be, he was on the committee, he's off now, but he, and I used to nominate his name and he would be on that committee. So I know that's one way, the city council had an appointment to the committee. How this committee's gonna be appointed now, I don't know. But that's a great, uh, great question, okay? And I know that Councilman Dabney and I have, uh, spoken a little bit about this and one thing that I'm not in favor of, and we can talk about it more in the workshop, is anybody that is on this committee is not gonna be getting paid to, uh, to sit on this board like other boards are. So that's just my feelings at this time. Okay, with that being said, any more comments on this, uh, ordinance? Having none, uh, Councilman Beatry?
Um, I've spent most of my professional life working on workforce development and sometimes it feels like it's almost been in a vacuum, but all of my educational career was spent looking at workforce development. My career on, um, the Chamber of Commerce was focused on workforce development. So I think this is a step forward. We haven't really had anything at the city level that focused on workforce development. This will, so I think it's a great use of this position. I'm glad that the mayor came up with it and I'd like to be listed as a cosigner.
Yeah, add, uh, Councilman Beatry as a, uh, co-sponsor, please. All right, any other, uh, comments from council members? Having none, this ordinance will be holdo- held over for a second reading at our next, uh, council meeting. And Ms. Nylem, our second ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending ordinance number four seven oh seven, commonly known as twenty twenty-four salary ordinance, to amend the position of Promise Scholarship Director to Education and Workforce Development Director. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Councilman Dabney?
Yep, uh, give an explanation on this, we had the, the Promise Scholarship, uh, person who worked just to Promise Scholarship, so what's happening now is the mayor's gonna change that to kind of have an umbrella where Promise Scholarship will be part of what's going on, but also education, uh, and, and workforce development. So workforce development along with the education side will be the responsibilities of, uh, the new director of this position. And with those additional duties, we're gonna be setting a new salary which is comparable to others in the city who have supervisory experience. And we're gonna have that because all of the interns, uh, that we bring into the city will be reporting to, um, the director, the Education and Workforce Development, uh, Director. So if you want me to talk about the salary at this time, it's in the, the, uh, ordinance there, be about seventy thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars. Like I said, that's in comparison with others, other department, uh, heads in the city. Um, so it's very comparable to those who have, uh, supervisory, um, responsibilities as well. So, once again, this is also gonna be covered, uh, in the workshop and I'm sure the mayor wants to be there, uh, as well. So we'll get this planned and, and we'll be talking about this one and the next one and the previous as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. And is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, council comments? Councilwoman Lee?
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this, please.
Please add Councilwoman Daisy Lee as a co-sponsor.
Mr. President, I'd like also to be added as a co-sponsor.
And add Councilman Cora as a co-sponsor.
I wanted to ask, Mr. Beatry, were you, did you want to be added as a co-sponsor to this ordinance or for the, to the previous one?
Well, the, the first one established that the duties would include workforce development.
Okay.
This actually creates the position, but I would like to be listed as a co-sponsor for this as well. That'd be consistent.
Okay, any other comments? Having none, this, uh, ordinance will be held over for a second reading at our next council meeting. And this here is our last ordinance on first reading, I believe. Ms. Nylem, by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Golf Non-Reverting Fund, number two five oh eight for the Park Department. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And as a sponsor, have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Yep, real quick, it's just a, uh, a transfer of money basically from the unappropriated balance of the, uh, Golf Non-Reverting Fund, which is operated by the Park and Recreation Department and Shannon Easton here. And, um, that they feel it'll be more or be better if they brought, uh, this position to golf pro. Um, am I correct on that? To bring the position in-house, so you can clear me up on that, I, I'm trying to remember from the last park department meeting.
Right, so, um, Shannon Easton, Park Superintendent, the intention of this ordinance is to transfer money that we have in our unappropriated balance into the Golf's twenty twenty-four budget to be able to purchase merchandise and sell it in-house. Last year, we did a consignment agreement with St. Andrews Products. Um, the park got thirty percent of their profit, which was under four thousand dollars. Um, it can't be too hard to beat that. If anyone has any retail experience, which I don't, but I know we can beat that. Um, recently, uh, we hired, uh, seasonal golf pro manager. She's a graduate of the Kelly School of Business at I U P U I. She's an avid golfer and she's also has experience in retail management. So her main focus is to sell merchandise, turn a profit, and market our course. Um, so I'm very confident we will bring in way more than four thousand dollars if we bring merchandise in-house. Um, seventy-five thousand seems like a lot of money for our first year. So I projected out based on last year's sales, we'll probably be around the forty-five thousand dollars mark as far as our retail sales. However, if we do better than that, it takes time for us to go through the park board and this council to get money re-appropriated and we could miss a great selling season. So I assure you that this money will only be spent to restock what we're selling and we'll keep a close eye on it. I did speak with the city controller, Mary Lynn Wall, we do have, um, a cash balance right now of five hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. So we have an appropriate amount of money to be able to transfer some in and still have enough to cover our upcoming budget if we had a catastrophic season, which I don't foresee. So that's pretty much it, in a nutshell, we want to take this in-house and increase our profitability.
Hey, any, uh, questions from council members? Since the Parks Superintendent's here to answer any questions?
I just wanna kinda add on to, uh, what Shannon was talking about. When we appropriate dollars like this, say we appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars, and like she said, let's say we, we spend forty-five thousand, this will, money will revert back. Uh, just like if we were to do a riverboat, uh, purchase order for a hundred thousand dollars, we only spend, uh, eighty, twenty thousand goes back to the riverboat fund. So the funds wouldn't just be sitting around like that, they would revert back to the original fund.
Okay, I, I do have a, uh, a question. So in twenty twenty-three, what was the total amount that the golf course sold? What's, what was the total gross income that they took, took in?
The sales were probably around forty-five thousand. However, we only retained thirty percent of the profit.
Okay.
So it was consignment, the merchandise comes in, we sell it. Whatever the profit is, seventy percent went back to St. Andrews and we kept thirty. And we are actually managing the inventory, the displays, selling it through our point of sale. Um, it didn't work out well, in my opinion. So we're trying to find a new avenue to make ourselves more profitable and have more control.
Okay, I guess what, what my question is, another question is, all right, so you made appro- or they grossed approximately forty-seven thousand. So had the, the Kelly School of Business, uh, associate, uh, has she have any projections by going in this direction? How much you project on, uh, you know, grossing? Cause if you're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars and last year we sold a total of forty-seven thousand, why would we need seventy-five thousand? You think that sales are gonna take off that fast?
I'm saying they could and say that we sold all of all of our stock by the end of June and we're in tournament season and we need more stock. We would have to go through our park board, three readings of this council. We're beyond our sales period, it's end of season by the time we get your approval. So we're trying to be proactive. Um, our new manager's only been here for four days. However, in talking with her, we believe that a thirty-five percent margin, profit margin is extremely conservative in the golf industry. But that's what I based my numbers on, cause I'm conservative. Um, she thinks it's likely that our profit margin will be much higher if we have the correct merchandise. That was, um, another issue that I had was, we didn't get to pick and choose what was coming in. So I don't think the quality was as good as we would like it to be. We're trying to uplift our course to be a quality product. Um, so that gives us a little more flexibility of choosing the products that we want to sell.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Dabney, you got a comment?
Just to add something else onto this, this is their non-reverting fund. It's not like it's coming from the riverboat or anything like that. This is their non-reverting fund that they're just basically moving dollars over, so it's not new money. Um, so, you know, I, I just wanted to make that clear because you said you're asking for seventy-five thousand and really it's just from their non-reverting fund being moved to another spot to be used. So it's not new money coming in or that we're giving to them.
Councilman Dabney or Councilman Beatry?
Yeah, I, I am hearing what, uh, Councilman Dabney said, but I don't have a problem with seventy-five thousand or all with, with Shannon because I know that eventually, uh, Councilwoman Tillman's gonna be calling the finance committee together to look at budgets and one of the items we're gonna be looking at is golf. So if, if it used to be made, we could make it at that time.
Okay, Councilman Nelson, did you have a, uh?
I just had a quick question, since we're not gonna be on consignment this year, um, what's the game plan? Who's gonna be providing the products?
So we are, uh, searching out vendors right now and I apologize, I don't have any retail background nor I, do I have golf. Um, after twenty-eight years, I'm taking over managing the golf course, so it's a new experience. But we're reaching out to golf vendors like Callaway, Titleist, um, to get quality products that we can sell at a decent margin. So there'll be a variety of vendors that we're setting up accounts with right now to bring merchandise in. And we need to do this fairly quickly. Um, I would almost ask that you guys hear this on second and third reading. We do expect to open our courses at the beginning of April. We do have some consignment merchandise left over from St. Andrews. We negotiated, um, keeping, I think it was sixty-two hundred dollars worth, that's the value of merchandise with our logo on it. Our contract allows us to make them take it back. I didn't think that was fair, they got us out of a jam last year. And I don't wanna burn bridges with them, you know, they did a good job and kept us stocked. However, we negotiated keeping that stock and selling it for, um, they're gonna give us twenty-five percent off cost for, there, I think it's thirty days, um, if it doesn't sell in thirty days, they knock it down to fifteen percent and then we have it for another ninety days, anything that doesn't sell goes back to them. So we can deeply discount this on the floor and move it out and still make a profit. And I think that's fair to them and also fair to us.
Okay, I didn't catch that whole discussion. So was that with St. Andrews Products is what, is what you, you had that discussion with them?
Yes, we negotiated to keep the logoed merchandise that would be hard for them to get off of, but at a deeply discounted price.
Okay, so who talked to St. Andrews Product?
We did.
Did you talk to St. Andrews Products?
Myself, Marty Neiman, yes, so we have an agreement with them. A new consignment agreement that lays out those terms. And a complete inventory of what we have in stock right now.
Okay. Did anyone talk to the president of the company?
Marty Neiman did, yes.
Marty Neiman did?
Yes, and he has already signed the agreement, it'll go to our park board tomorrow.
Okay. All right, I just, okay, I don't have, uh, Dr. Cora, go ahead.
Mr. President, a request has been made to go ahead and do the second and third reading.
Okay, I'm not done with my comments yet, yeah. Uh, one thing I wanna say is that I know that we're talking about, you know, you're reaching out for quality products. Well, I, I know St. Andrews Products and I know the products that they had out at that golf course last year cause I golfed and I was out there a number of times. And they're a Michigan City company, Michigan City born and raised company and people that run that business. And I think they might take offense to saying that they don't have quality products uh, at that company that were in that golf course, so. at that company that were in that golf course. So I just wanted to bring
I apologize. They didn't mean it that way. Again, I don't have a retail background, but it was more, the discussions I had were, I guess, a different quality of going to the other vendors. Again, I apologize. I didn't want to say anything bad about St. Andrews because no, they were great to work with and stocking our pro shop.
Yeah, they set up the whole program out there.
Yeah, but I think that the golf managers are looking more towards higher end like Adidas or Nike. You know what I'm saying? More choices and then like, again, I don't know the golf industry. I go out there, I look at the pretty colors and that's how I buy.
Okay.
I don't know about the whipping and the this and that.
No, let, let her finish.
So that's a good conversation that you could probably get more detail from Marty Neiman.
Okay. Councilwoman Tillman?
I was just going to help with that. In other words, you're looking at not lack of quality, but more branding, more fashionable, more modernized golfing gear.
Yes, branding favorite for that.
Okay, well, just to comment to that, they have everything as quality and as fashionable as Adidas, Wilson, Callaway, whatever you want to, whoever you want to put out there. And all I want to say is this, there were no golf shirts out there for seventy-five, eighty dollars. And if the marketing team here thinks that they're going to be selling eighty-dollar golf shirts at the municipal golf course, I don't think that's going to happen because I don't think that scale of golfer is going to come out there every day to golf. But anyway, I just leave that as a may. Okay. Going back to now, we're not, we are not done with, we didn't even go to public comment yet. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon. Okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, council comments?
Mr. President, I would like to echo your sentiments about St. Andrews Products. They're a great company, local company and I have had relationships with that company also, but since the program has already been set up and there has been a request made to go ahead and do the second and third reading on this ordinance today, I make a motion that we go ahead and do that.
We have to do a formal public hearing at the next meeting. So we'll have to wait and do second and third reading.
We have to do it at the next meeting. Yeah, because you have to have a, let me just explain, you have to have a formal public hearing because we're dealing with money and we're spending money. So that's why the formal public hearing comes into place. Okay? All right. Thank you, Doctor. Okay, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading at our next council meeting. And I think we have one ordinance on third reading this evening. Ms. Snile?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending ordinance number four seven oh seven, commonly known as the 2024 salary ordinance to create the position of undergraduate and graduate municipal interns. And this is introduced by Mr. Preszulinski, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Moldenauer and Ms. Lee.
And do the sponsors have anything they'd like to add? Councilman Dabney?
Yep, real quick, we're establishing the salaries for these undergraduate interns and graduate interns. I think we did put the numbers out there. Undergraduate interns, it can make between seventeen dollars and twenty dollars an hour. Graduate interns nineteen to twenty-two. And these will be the interns that will be hired that the Education and Workforce Development Director will be overseeing. So this will constitute a lot of her supervision responsibilities. These people that will be coming through this program.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Councilman. A couple of comments I have is I think these interns are going to benefit the city very much by working on projects and getting things under control that seem to be a little bit mismanaged right now and out of control. And yeah, that's why I signed on to this to get this going and get the interns in here and get somebody's issues that we have under control. That being said, is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Council comment? Councilman Cora?
Yeah, Mr. President, I don't have a comment, but I have a question. How many interns spots are available in this program?
I could answer that.
Well, Councilman, Councilman Dabney, do you know?
The mayor stood here and said that the the different departments are actually letting them know how many interns they will need. So right now, we don't know that.
I think you said twenty to twenty-five.
Yeah, the director
Yeah, but we don't know.
Is here. And she knows exactly.
Good evening. We have up to twenty-five spots. So that's, that's the number we're looking at so far. So yes, I know some departments want more than one intern. We are considering all of that and yes, each intern has, I'm sorry, each department head will have to turn in what is called a scope of work just to describe, you know, what would be in your area, how would the intern benefit? What would be the benefit to the department and the benefit and or the benefit to the city? And so we're going to look at that as we choose students. And so the number Mayor Angie gave me was twenty-five, so.
One of the question I had was how many months will they work?
They work eight to ten weeks, so starting as a summer program. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions by council members? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilwoman Lee. Ms. Snile on the vote?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Preszulinski?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
And Dr. Cora?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Snile. And under new business? Yeah, we got the 2024 council committee assignments. And underneath these assignments where it says voting members, this is where it comes back to the council where the council has to vote on the positions that have voting members. All right. So with the animal control board, and what I'd like to do is just go one by one, and I believe what we're going to need is a, you know, do we have to have a nomination in a second? Or do we just vote on the name that's in that position? Mr. Attorney?
I believe you're making an appointment, so I mean, I guess if you want to have nominations available, you can, the committee can can appoint someone and and then if there's not a sufficient number of votes to approve that, then I guess you'd have to go into nominations.
Okay, well, let me ask the council, would you rather just vote, you know, on each position just by, you know, a voice vote? Yay?
Mr. President, I would, I would appreciate if you can present it as a slate and then we can vote, vote by voice vote.
If we approve the 2024 council committee assignments, the problem solved. So if we just take one vote on accepting committee assignments as presented, we're probably there.
Okay, well, okay, before we vote then, okay, and I, and I agree with that. That what I want to do is just explain the, if there's any questions, but I want to explain it, the internal control oversight committee and what that is. And the only reason there's only one name at that spot is because the head of the finance committee wants, and correct me if I'm wrong, okay, is that when the DGLF Department of Government comes in, yeah. Yeah, when they come in and then the finance committee person comes in and reviews the audit that they do and that's where she comes in or that position comes in to attend that, to make sure everything's going all right and see what the results of the audit were. And then on the economic development corporation member elected by the EDC board, and that'll be a two-year, the way I understand, it's going to be a two-year position. All right, so what, so what transpired and Councilman Dabney's got that position? And I'm sure he'll do a fine job. So when Councilwoman Angie Nelson-Deitch got re-elected to the council, she was nominated to that position by the board and voted in by that board. So then there were questions by other council members that we didn't even know that this was transpiring, that this vote went on and she was, she got elected to that board. Well, other council members felt, well, maybe we would like to be on that board also so we can be involved with, you know, economic development and what's going on on the inside here. So then at that time, the director said, okay, whenever, whenever the election comes up again, which would be in two years, then we'll send out a letter to all the council members. And then they have to, they got like two weeks to send in their resume to be on this commission. So that happened the first two years and then Angie got off and then Dahlia Ziegus got on the commission and she wrote, she filled out the letter and she got on. Okay, this time, this go around, none of the council members received that letter. But I know that Councilman Dabney had been talking to Clarence Holes and then, you know, it went in that direction. So I sat down and I had a meeting with Director Holes saying that from here on out, when the election comes around again, that two years or two weeks prior to this election, send out a letter to all the council people. Let them, if they're interested, fill out the information, get it back to them. So their board can take a look at it and make it fair that, you know, everybody has a shot at being on this board. So that's what is supposed to take place going forward. Okay? All right, and moving forward, so we will take a vote, everybody in favor of the appointed voting positions on the committee assignment sheet, vote by sign, by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Nobody's against it, so all the voting positions and the whole assignment sheet passes the council. Okay, our next FYI, the council has one appointment to the Urban Enterprise Association due to Joseph Nelson becoming a council member on January first, 2024. Okay, so that's open. And we're not voting on that tonight, but who's ever interested. So we will be taking nominations at the next council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Another FYI, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Sustainability Commission due to Nancy Mullenauer becoming a council member on January first, 2024. The term will begin immediately and expire March thirty-first, 2024. Councilwoman Tillman, you have a question?
If we, if we, if the council just voted for the 2024 council committee assignment and it passed unanimously, why would we then have nominations next week? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Because they have to be replaced.
These are replacements.
Yeah, because the members of the community, they're appointed by the council.
Yeah.
These are not the liaisons, these are the appointments by the council.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're liaisons.
Okay.
Points, okay, Trace. Okay.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. And with that being done, said unfinished business nominations, the council has one appointment to the Animal Control Board representing the Humane Society and the incumbent is Karen Edwards. And I know that the council and the city clerk received a letter from the Humane Society endorsing Karen Edwards. So are there any other nominations to the Animal Control Board from the Humane Society? Having none, I believe that
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to appoint Karen Edwards to the Animal Control Board representing the Humane Society.
Support.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All right, that the incumbent Karen Edwards be reappointed to the Humane Society Animal Control Board. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And nominations, the council has two appointments to the Michigan City Social Status African American Males Commission representing the following and will expire February fifteenth, 2024. The Michigan City Area Schools for a two-year appointment and the common council appointment. And we haven't received letters from anybody. Is there any nominations?
Doc, I've been away for four years, but there's a process still the same. We, we ask for people to complete the form in your office.
Right.
And then we can nominate them at this meeting and the next meeting we vote.
Right.
The council is, is you chose Mr. Nelson to be the liaison. He's a voting member. They have changed it that it's going to be a two-year term, not a one-year term. So he's already, all we need is the Michigan City Area Schools.
Oh, okay.
And we need something from the Michigan City Area Schools nominating someone from the board, the school board to
Be on the social status?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, don't they select that person themselves?
The school.
Yeah.
The school board does. That doesn't come to us perperal.
Well, they still do. We've always done this on the, on the social status. Not on other, a lot of them we don't, but social status, we do.
Okay.
Okay, but the, the process is the same. In order to, for a person in the community who's interested in serving on one of these boards, they have to fill out a form in your office. So they used to.
For the council.
Yeah, to be appointed by the council.
Right, but this is being appointed by the Michigan City Areas.
I get it. I got that part.
Right.
I just want to make sure I have in my head what we're doing as a
As a council.
Nominations first, next meeting.
FYI, nominations vote.
Okay, so it's the same as it used to be?
Yes.
Sorry to take.
And let's see, on the next page, page seven, under nominations, the council has one appointment to the Community Enrichment Corporation and the incumbent is Mr. Kenneth Fly.
Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Kenneth Fly to the Enrichment Corporation.
Support.
There's been a motion by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Beatrice. Okay.
Like tonight, you could take the vote if you want to.
Yeah, tonight, tonight, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. And we will do this by a, a voice vote. Everyone in favor of Mr. Kenneth Fly being to the Community Enrichment Corporation signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Fly.
Thank you. I didn't want to come way up here and not say one thing, so.
Okay, Mr. Fly, Mr. Fly.
Oh.
Name?
Six twenty-five. East Michigan Boulevard, Kenneth Fly. I'm very proud to be on this board. This is going to be my last three-year term. That'd be nine years. I've been serving to the best of my ability with my civic duties and started off a little rough, you know, because started off a little rough, you know, because we felt like it was a little not as diverse, so, you know, we made changes like Ron Hussein, and, uh, you know, Ron got on the board and he said, I'm ready to spar with you, you know, so I was like, I'm done fighting, Ron, you know, let's get, get along right now, you know, so yeah, we thank everybody, man, and let's keep it going, thank you, guys.
All right, and, and Mr. Fly, I, I would like to add, I would like to add, uh, getting to know you personally.
Yeah.
And what you do for the community and what you do for this enrichment group and your flying high organization. You're a, uh, in my mind, a stellar citizen and keep up the good work. And you don't have to go anywhere after three years, you can sign on for another three-year term.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, thank you for the knowledge, brother. Yeah, but Don, I, I work hard out here, brother, I ain't gonna lie, don't let the wheelchair fool you, okay?
I never did, I never did. All right, thank you, Mr. Fly. Okay, at this time, comments from the public? Anyone from the public wish to speak on any items? And we have a three-minute time limit, and at fifteen seconds to go on to three minutes, Councilwoman Mullenauer will raise her hand.
Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Uh, I did a little tour of Michigan City today with a gentleman. Uh, he's with Hostom Associates, and pointed out a few issues that we have in Michigan City. Only a few, but there's a lot that we didn't get to. Our, our streets are totally a disaster.
Hmm.
Nothing has been done with them for years. Our previous mayor left, left it go and never paved any of our streets. And our, our parking area beside the streets, we used to have gravel put in there. The city no longer gets that gravel. The only thing you can put in now, they'll put in that, uh, ground up asphalt stuff, and it's, it's in real big pieces, that, that doesn't serve the purpose. I, I showed him on my street alone, on one side where the water runs down, is all washed out next to the pavement. And the pavement's all cracking off and breaking, and it's eventually gonna go all the way into the middle of the street. And a lot of streets are that way, Woodland is real bad, just past Joy School. It, I showed him that today also. And, and they've been looking into that, so. But nothing, nothing got done with our streets, except for Paz Road. And that was pushed with you people a lot to get done. Didn't get done when you wanted it done, before the football things went, but at least it got done. But a lot more needs done. I don't know if they have the money for it or don't have the money, and he didn't spend the money for it, or what, but you, you can drive down Franklin Street and there is big cracks in Franklin Street. And if it's left gone through next winter, it's gonna get worse because that water gets in there, it freezes and expands, and it expands that asphalt and that pavement, and just makes the cracks worse. So I've been, I've been after them for many years on, on this. You know, Broad, Broadway Street is real bad. I travel that every day. Yes.
No, she's just giving you the fifteen seconds, Ernie.
Okay, but yeah, I travel that street every day, and i- it's, it's really bad. He did, he did mark down one area that has been patched. But it, it's come out again, the patching doesn't last as long as it should.
Okay, thank you, Ernie.
So hopefully something gets, gets done this year before next winter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, Tommy Klavik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I want to continue to wish everybody a Happy Black History Month, and I think we'd all be remiss if we did not offer our heartfelt congratulations to the Michigan City Marquette Girls Basketball Team. They are the semi-state champions, they're moving on to the state championship game, an exciting game in the state finals. The freshman Marissa Pleasant hit that buzzer beater three-pointer at the end to win it for the Blazers. They, they got a real tough opponent coming up Saturday, but I think it'll be a good game, another other team they're playing is the defending state champion, so I think it's gonna be a really even game. Yeah, let's say, go Wolves beat the Slicers, like tonight, they're now playing down on the Port Slicer Gym, I think that game's about ready to go final. Just responding to Ernie Hollahan about the roads. Uh, you know, the State of Indiana General Assembly, they did, uh, implement a funding mechanism for, for the cities to, to improve our roads. All, just about every city in Northwest India has opted into it, LaPorte, Portage, Valpo, Hammond, Gary, just about every others, it's called the wheel tax. It's, we're not asking people to give up the IRAs or their 401Ks, it's basically, when you go to register your plate, you pay twenty-five dollars for every passenger vehicle, forty dollars for a big truck, or ten dollars for a trailer motor. It goes a hundred percent to our roads, and, and you have the power to, to impose that, and that's what we need to do. You know, we could buy equipment to have our roads straight instead of having to lease it out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I know it's a controversial thing, a lot of people say, you know, people outside drive our roads, and, but that, that's what we need to do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klavik.
Hello, Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street, um, this is concerning Burnham Brewery, it's not quite open, but it might be open soon. Burnham Brewery lays in the, uh, US twelve overlay district, which is outlined in Appendix C of the code. The, uh, appendix requires any development along the US twelve corridor to have ten-foot wide path, paved pathways. Burnham Brewery right now does not, it looks like they've done all their concrete work. It looks like they've done all their concrete work, it looks like they're just going to seed up to the roadway, but that's not what the US twelve overlay district requires. So hopefully before they open up, before the city gives them a permit, they will get the sidewalk, uh, a paved sidewalk in there. The other thing that, uh, Appendix C requires of a business like that is appropriate off, uh, off-road parking. For that size building, which is a little over ten thousand square feet, it requires one parking space for every, every, uh, seventy square feet of gross, uh, floor area. That would come out to about a hundred sixty-four par- a hundred forty-six parking spaces they would need off the road. They did pave one parking lot across the street, but it only contains about forty-six parking spaces, so they're about a hundred short. For people that own buildings or houses in that area, that could be a big problem if all of a sudden all the parking is, uh, going on the street, people are parking on private lots or something like that, so hopefully that's another thing that will be rectified before they're allowed to open. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, anyone else from the public wish to speak? Go ahead, Mr. Borden.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, loud and clear.
Darryl Borden, eight hundred State Row two twelve. Uh, last Thursday evening, me and my mom was involved in a car accident at Tenth and Washington. We were okay, but I want to come to the council tonight to request that you guys look into making it a four-way stop, please, before someone gets seriously hurt or even killed. Because the lady ran the stop sign on West Tenth Street, and going south on Washington Street, there is no stop sign. So I'm just asking the council if there's any way someone could just put up a stop sign there, making it a four-way stop, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Borden.
Can I respond to him? Done. Can I respond to it?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Dabney.
It's, it's public comment, but you can respond if you want. Um, Darryl, text me that intersection, and this is gonna have to go before Border Works, so just text me the intersection that you're talking about, and they'll do a study to see if they can put stop signs out there, but it's gonna have to go through Border Works.
Hello, Scott Malonter in Kewett Place. On that last thing, apologies to their accident, I strongly object to another stop sign on that stretch of roadway. It's been requested many times by Brother.
Brother Sean from Market Ave.
It's been looked at many times and been denied many times by the Border Works.
Traffic there, some of the South Shore tracks.
As the man even, uh, said, somebody ran a stop sign. Another stop sign's not gonna fix that. Um, I would suggest based on, oh, what our, another citizen said about the Burnham Brewing thing, that somebody contact our code enforcement to go visit them. I mean, it said, you know, let's be proactive about that. Um, and Ernie's right, roads are always an ongoing thing, but I've noticed Michigan City's really good at doing that tar thing on the cracks, and I'm sure we'll be tarring this year as always, I don't know if that's a permanent contract or city or, or, or contractors, so I'm sure they're gonna take care of that. And I believe the city has approved one point one million dollars or so in new, in new paving for this season, which was about double. Uh, mayor was able to get ahold of another five hundred thousand dollars, I believe, above the initial request, so we should be seeing a lot of new paving this year, as I understand it, and I congratulate us all, and um, maybe there should be a news release so more people know about that.
Hmm.
Thank you.
All right.
And no more stop signs.
Thank you.
Uh, Tommy Klavik, we're getting around three minutes, everybody else is done, if everybody else is done. That was what Darryl Borden said, but they need to put there is a roundabout, but on the city of Carmel, if, if you've all been there, very affluent, well, well-class, high-class city, they got roundabouts on every intersection there, it's like I said earlier, those, they cost money to put, impose the wheel tax, you can use the wheel tax money to put in these roundabouts, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any, any other public comments? Go ahead, sir.
Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street, I would like to make a comment on making a four-way stop. I live across from Pullman Park, right off Willard and Sixth Street, has a four-way stop, I see it right out my window, I see cars just blowing through there all the time. Not because they don't see the sign, they know it's there and they just blow through, I just have a hard I, I am just surprised, I don't see more accidents there, I'm surprised kids in the park, which is a fifteen mile an hour speed limit there on Willard, haven't got seriously hurt or anything else from accidents, I think a big thing we need is just more patrolling, which, you know, people may not like, uh, stop sign cameras or something like that, but maybe that's something we need to look at, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else from the public wish to say anything, anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public wish to say anything, having none, council comments? Any council comments?
Mr. President, um, I would like to be added to, um, the ordinance that was read for first reading regarding to redefine the duties and responsibilities of the director, um, for the Promise Scholarship. And also I'd like to be added to the ordinance number forty-seven oh seven, the change of name from Promise Scholarship Director to Education and Workforce Development Director, thank you.
Okay, do we, do we have all that? For the clerks? Let her catch up. Do you have that, Amanda?
Four, one. You want to be added to the Promise, the all three of them?
Yes, all three of them, I believe I am on the third one already, but yeah, just do all three of them, please, thank you.
Okay, any other, anyone else from the council have anything? I just have a couple of things, uh, and I handed this out to the council members before the, uh, meeting. This is Community Development Block Grant Program, especially for the new council members, take a look at it. Uh, if you have any questions, call Sherry, uh, Wilson, she is the, uh, director of it. Lot of good things there, uh, just for an example, uh, there was a woman uh, that I know needed a new roof, talked to her, and we were able to get her a, uh, new roof last fall on her house, she didn't have to pay a, pay a dime for it. You know, and there's qualifying limits and things like that, but there's a lot of good stuff that can get done, so that's just another avenue for council members to use if they trying to get something done for, uh, for somebody. Uh, the other thing that I want to touch on, and I know that Clarence is here this evening, but I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, talk about it for the small businesses, is this, uh, new grant program being offered to bolster Michigan City businesses. City, Michigan City Economic Development Corporation, uh, Michigan City teams are launching a small business assistance grant program. And the grant program is supported by the, uh, ARPA funds of twenty twenty-one that seek to propel forward those negative, negatively impacted by the continuing effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And our city leadership seeks to lend a helping hand through funds that can address lasting issues that can be linked to COVID. And the grants that are available, they're in a range of five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars per qualified business for the funds invested in required arenas such as infrastructure, equipment, employee payroll, utility or operating costs, rent or mortgage expenses, marketing and advertising and physical improvements. But the applicants must meet criteria, including being located in Michigan City boundaries, have been in business before March the first, twenty twenty, have employees, uh, at twenty-five or fewer, full-time status and demonstrate an economic hardship. And the application and criteria specs are available at the EDCMC. Uh, the easiest way to do it is just call the Economic Development Corporation and ask for Mr. Clarence Hulse, and he will assist you in filling out the application, so you can possibly get five to twenty-five thousand dollars for your small business. Uh, and the other thing we all have to do, and I know I certainly am, won't be able to go to the game this Saturday in Indianapolis, because I had a previous engagement, but I want to wish all the Marquette Blazers, the whole Marquette family, uh, good luck at the Single A State Championship in Indianapolis Saturday for the girls' Single A basketball state championship. Uh, last Saturday night was just an amazing game. Couldn't fight it on TV, so I listened to it on the radio like the old time, listening to the Red Devils on WIMS and just hooting and hollering, and, uh, the three-point shot with, I don't know, one second to go, and Marquette wound up winning by two points to send them on to, uh, victory. So that's why I'm wearing my Marquette blue and gold tie tonight, in honor of the Marquette Blazers. And all I want to say is the old saying here that I remember from years ago, and Mr. Warren Jones, hey, hey, all the way, right? That used to be the, the battle cry in Michigan City when it came basketball sectionals. You saw it in every business window and everybody's car, what have you, newspapers. It was hey, hey, all the way, so that's what I'm saying to the Marquette Girl Blazers. Hey, hey, all the way, good luck, make Michigan City proud and bring home a state championship trophy. And with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, council meeting is now adjourned.